I did, thank you.
You did as well. And Kareen, you got to pack up for the next meeting.
I did.
For the next meeting.
What?
You'll be here for the next meeting.
I will.
I may not. I'm coming back from Vegas that afternoon.
Kareen will jump right on the first spot.
Yep.
I might.
It's good we have two alternates.
I'm gonna be docking you guys pay pretty soon.
Sweet.
All right, are we good?
Roll in here.
Just tap the door, let them know we're good.
There are a lot of things on the docket, like six things.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Danvers Zoning Board of Appeals. We are now in session. I would ask if you could please turn off or silence any mobile devices so we are not interrupted. I'm gonna start off by introducing our board. Down to my right is Kareen Dougherty. Our clerk tonight is Ken Shoals. Myself, John Bonner is the chairman. To my left is Ken Javerman, and down to my far left is Chris Dembowski. Here from our planning department tonight is Aaron Morris, welcome.
Josh Morris.
Josh, sorry.
It's okay, I'm a replay.
Aaron Henry is who I was thinking of, I'm sorry. I'll briefly go over our procedure, I think people are pretty familiar with it. Our clerk will read the case aloud, and I would ask that the applicant go to the microphone and introduce yourself and tell us what it is you'd like to do. At that point, we'll hear your presentation, come back to the board for questions. We ask that we're not interrupted, and people, please do not shout out from your chairs. If you'd like to be heard when the public session opens, please raise your hand. I'll call upon you and then go to the microphone, identify yourself, your address, and make your comment to the chair, please, and we will put it out for question from there. At that point, we'll close public comment, and we'll come back and deliberate as a board here in public, you'll hear that deliberation, and again, asking that we're not interrupted. So, I think that pretty much covers it. At that point, the applicant would, you know, know their options based on how the votes are going amongst the board. Board members, we were all in receipt of minutes for August 25th meeting. Is there any further discussion, and if not, if I could get a motion, please?
So moved.
I got a motion, and a second? Second by Kareen, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, and I think I got everything. With that said, Mr. Clerk, we'll call off our first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first case is 20 Pope's Lane. This is highway corridor zoned. Request for a special permit to allow for a total of five storage containers to be located on-site to provide secure storage for materials associated with the contractor's yard in excess of 180 days. The containers to be screened with fencing, and the request is made by EDM Construction, care of Nancy McCann Esquire, docket 25-5111.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you very much, my name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of EDM Construction, Inc. With me tonight is Jacqueline McGill, President of EDM Construction, and we are requesting a special permit relative to storage containers to be located at an existing contractor's yard at 20 Pope's Lane. The property is located in the Highway Corridor Zoning District. We have requested five storage containers to be there long-term to secure the storage for the EDM Construction business itself. This site at 20 Pope's Lane has long been a contractor's yard, probably for close to 50 years. Previously, the Mantor Construction Company, some of you may have known Warren Mantor over the years, and EDM purchased the property last year for its construction company, which was begun in 1999. The business involves structural steel and metal subcontracting for large projects, bridge work, and the like, and has a lot of large equipment, large materials, valuable materials, that need to be secured and need to have an appropriate place to be stored. Not dissimilar to the large type of construction that Mantor did, although we have now steel and other types of materials that he did not regularly have on-site. During the course of the prior contractor's yard, there have been storage containers on this site, two of them probably in excess of 25, 30 years. So there are two existing storage containers that have been on this site for quite a long time, prior to the zoning bylaw addressing storage containers. So I would suggest to you that those are grandfathered. However, we've encompassed all of the storage containers for the site in this application. So we are requesting five storage containers. There are currently two on-site, which are the grandfathered containers, and two that EDM purchased from an abutting site when they acquired the property, not realizing they needed to come for the special permit for these containers. So, we're requesting the special permit for a total of five containers, long-term, meaning those would be permanent containers to meet the needs of this business. We anticipate that four of the containers would be on-site for greater than 180 days throughout the year, and I would suggest to you that those would be permanent storage containers on the site. The fifth storage container will come and go and be located on project sites. So that probably would not be on-site 180 consecutive days during any particular year. As you can see, on the plan that's up, we're proposing four of the storage containers on the north side of the site, behind a fence, that is a slatted fence, chain link, so that it will, you won't be able to see through it. We're proposing a high fence in order to shield those containers, and the plan does show you the perimeter of that fencing and the area of the fencing, which would go around and completely screen the containers from Pope's Lane. The fifth container you see on plan left, on the southerly side of the property, that is also behind slatted fencing. As you know, the highway corridor, a zone permits a contractor's yard by special permit in this zoning district. Again, contractor's yard has been on this site for many, many years, and a contractor's yard by definition allows outdoor storage. Outdoor storage of heavy equipment, heavy materials, all sorts of supplies that might be needed in association with a contractor's business. So, equipment, materials, all of that can be outside, doesn't have to be enclosed, doesn't have to be screened, it's just permitted as part of a contractor's yard. That is, in fact, the definition of a contractor's yard. This can lead to unsightly storage, as we've seen in some locations for contractor's yards, and what we think that this will do for this particular site is organize the site, provide a little bit of neatness, because some of the stuff that would be permitted to be stored outside will be stored permanently inside. That provides, again, some order, some neatness to the site, but also provides the security. The type of equipment and materials and the steel that would be stored here is subject to theft, and so we want to prevent that from happening. And we do that in two ways, with the storage containers themselves, and then with the fencing that provides the screening, as well as additional protection from any type of theft. We are seeking permanent storage of containers on this site, and in 2021, I'll remind the board that this board granted another applicant, also located in the highway corridor zone, but for retail wholesale use, in fact, not for a contractor's yard, permission to have four storage containers on that site permanently. So it's not a, this is not a case of first impression for this board. The board did grant that special permit to allow four storage containers at that site in the highway corridor zone, a much more visible site, behind a slatted chain-link fence. You required in that case that that applicant come back 18 months after, which the applicant did, and to my knowledge, anyway, there were no issues with that, with those storage containers. The applicant's storage containers meet all of the setback requirements and other, I'll call them design type of requirements, under Section 9 of the zoning bylaw, four storage containers. They meet the setback requirements, they don't take up any required parking spaces, they're not stacked, these are single-level storage containers, they contain only materials and supplies for EDM Construction, and there's, of course, no hazardous materials. The application, I have also outlined all of the requirements under Section 30 of the bylaw for issuance of a special permit. So we do meet all of the requirements for this special permit, the five criteria under Section 30 for the special permit. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Attorney Ken, before I turn it over to the board, so I know this was here before us, prior, I believe in February or March of this year. At that time, we had noted there was five storage containers on-site. So maybe if you could, before I send it, maybe save us some time here, has anything happened or changed since February? Has any organization or anything been adjusted at this site, improved, has there been anything added?
Improved in that there are four storage containers currently on the site, two on the north side and two on the south side.
So physical location's all the same as the application prior?
The prior, you know, I wasn't involved with the prior application, the applicant came in on their own, and it didn't have things quite in order. I have since that, that application was withdrawn. I've met with the applicant a number of times, and I've also met with Brian Zickelli, Code Enforcement Officer, to determine how best to situate this and different options, and we also actually met with the building inspector, or he did, I should say, on our behalf, with some ideas here, and this is what you see before you is the way this should be laid out to make access the best, but also, to address your question, has anything changed? There were five storage containers at that time, one was removed, so there are only four storage containers now. Two of those storage containers have been on-site in excess of 25 years, so those would be grandfathered storage containers, I've included those, however, in the five that we're requesting.
Okay, I think, I think that answers it. So, but I just want, I'm, sorry, more clarity. The two you keep referencing that you say are grandfathered, they're gonna be part of this four?
Correct.
Physically gonna move from their location and go to this spot you're proposing?
Yes, they're currently on the southerly side of the building, if you were out there, and I'm sure that you were, they're the older ones looking at the building on the right-hand side.
Yep.
The storage containers will be placed as you see them on this plan. So the four storage containers at the north end of the site would be the permanent storage containers. The one that you see on the southerly side of the site is the one that will move to project locations.
And this fifth one you referenced that has left the site, is this the, for lack of better words, the rotating one that goes in and out, or, and that's why it's off-site currently? So it's been delivered out to a site, and it's gonna be the one that returns?
Yes.
We might move another one, but once those three are loaded on that website, those four, move another one.
Okay. Yeah. Has, are you asking, is the fifth one not on the site now because it's out on a job?
Correct.
Or was it sold? The answer is yes.
Okay, all right, I'll hold my questions to the end, I'm gonna start down there with you, Chris.
Just a, maybe a clarification, the slatted fencing, is it going to be 10 feet tall?
We're proposing 10 feet tall only to try to respond to some of the comments that we heard. Does it need to be 10 feet tall? No. The applicant would prefer, actually eight, would be, would provide the necessary security type of screening that we're looking for. I suspect that, having been out there as recently as this morning, probably also provide the visible, but we added, we said 10 because we thought that would be most responsive.
And one other question, the two gates, are they, is anyone gonna have access to these gates? Are they locked gates? Are they pass keys?
Oh, they'll be locked gates, operated by Mrs. McGill and her staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Chris. Ken?
So I noticed there was two smaller, like eight-foot storage containers in the back. There were wayside containers, so are those, can I ask the planning director? So would an eight-foot storage container be classified as a storage container? Or is it classified as like an accessory or something like that?
I believe that it doesn't, in the performing, in the, those zoning bylaws doesn't say size, I don't believe, so I think that it would be considered, it would be considered...
A storage container?
Yeah.
I think this, what we talk about for storage containers are the large containers. They're typically, how long are they, 18, 18 to 20 feet long. Smaller little containers, I would think, would be part of a standard contractor's yard to put bolts, and that's what they're used for here, and miscellaneous type of things, but not categorized as a storage container.
Well, what do we call them? It's not a shed. I mean, so it looks like they're standard storage container size, but, but they're only like eight feet long?
Yeah, I think those would be, under the bylaw, we're allowed to have equipment type of storage in a contractor's yard?
Okay, but we don't have a definition of a storage container.
Bylaw doesn't contain a definition, I don't think, I'll look, as far as size.
I didn't think so either, but we could continue the conversation, I could, I could continue to look through that, but I also, I didn't think that there was a size.
Yeah, we'll let Josh hook that up, and you can get back to us.
Yeah, so those are on the east side, I believe, in the back of the building?
Yeah.
Yep, and then there was a bunch of where all the toolboxes are and stuff like that. There's a front-end loader and a, three other storage, so there's two, two of them are EDM, but then there's a front-end loader and another storage container. Is that another company? Is that true? Is that management north? It looks like it's abutting the line, I didn't know if that was one of yours?
No, that's the problem.
Sorry, can you please identify us?
I'm sorry, I'm Jackie McGill with EDM Construction.
Thank you.
That's part of the problem, we want to fence in our yard, is because we'll come in in the morning and there's random things. I don't own a front-end loader, I don't, EDM doesn't have anything like that. We have forklifts, but no loaders.
Okay, because I noticed the markings on that was scrap metal management north, so I assume that's yet another company.
I don't know who that is.
Okay. So just those two 25 or so footers are yours on that north side?
Currently, yes.
Okay. Anything else, Ken? Nope.
Very good, thank you. Ken Squier?
Thank you. Attorney McCann, you said the fencing is gonna be 10 feet high. How tall are the storage units themselves? I'm assuming higher than 10 feet.
We believe they're eight, they're eight feet high. Storage containers, the storage containers are on the ground, on a gravel surface.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Ken. Kareen?
So just following along with that question, if they're eight feet high, are they going to be on any type of a platform or any type of, I don't know, just, just like a stationary, I guess, kind of footing, which would make it increase in height?
No.
Okay, all right. Now, you also mentioned that there are trucks that are parking on your property, and you're not aware of who they are, because we're kinda having problems with these kind of things in other parts of the town. So, if you wanna get in touch with Mr. Zickelli and report that to Mr. Cassidy, it might be a good idea, because he'll investigate and he'll have them remove their trucks from your premises.
Well, they don't leave them there.
Excuse me, hold on. Can you please speak to the mic?
You have to go back up to the microphone.
It's not like they're left for long periods of time, but they'll...
But they're still parking on your property, and they're not your trucks, so, you know, we do like to, you know, investigate that and kinda clear it up, and if you're looking to put a fence on, I would certainly encourage that. So, Attorney McCann, with regard to these storage containers, so the four of them are already existing, they're not purchasing any new or additional containers, and the four will be located on the spot that was on the plan?
Yes, on the north side.
Will you need a building permit to put up the fencing?
We shouldn't.
Okay. So once, if you're granted your relief, you would move them immediately, and then how long after that until the fence would be erected?
Order it right away.
Yeah, I'd like to do it as soon as possible. I don't know about available.
Okay.
As soon as possible, they would order them right, they'd move the containers to their permanent location?
Okay.
And get that, that fencing in on that side maybe first, and then the other one, but right away?
If we gave you a reasonable timeframe to have it all completed, would you be okay with that as a condition?
Sure.
One other thing, what exactly is being stored in these containers? And the reason why I'm asking is, it seems now that it's kind of goods and materials and things like that, whereas when you came in originally, it was more construction equipment, and I'm just trying to figure out what's being stored there?
We have, I'm sorry, it's a combination.
Okay.
There's, there'll be, and it'll change depending on what we need, but it is a combination. We are aware that we need, if there is gas and gas equipment and stuff that needs to be stored differently, we do have provisions for that.
Okay.
So we are aware of that, the fire department has come through, so that is something we're cognizant of.
Okay, okay, because our outdoor storage, now obviously, containers are different, but in Danvers, our outdoor storage only allows goods, materials, merchandise, in stock directly associated with the primary operation of the lot. So, again, if it's a storage container, you certainly, if we allow it, you could keep equipment in there, but I think that's one of the reasons why the Salem Supply Company case might have been a little bit different, because they were actually stocking pipes and things that, merchandise that they were selling in their retail, in their retail store.
That, that is true.
Yes.
That's what they were storing. However, in this case, this isn't outdoor storage, this is a contractor's yard.
Oh, no, 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 I know, I'm just saying as far as like, what's in the container?
Yeah, so I think she answered that, what's in the container is materials as well as equipment.
Mm-hmm.
That tends to either need to be covered from, you know, inclement weather, but more, quite honestly, for protection from storage, this is valuable stuff.
Okay.
So, that's the type of, it is different from general outdoor storage, because it's a contractor's yard where you can have materials and equipment and vehicles and that kind of thing, but within those containers, that I think we've, I hope we've answered that question.
And also, these storage containers, will there be electricity, plumbing, or any heating that would be needed for any of that?
No.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions.
Thanks, Kareen. Attorney McCann, in looking at this plan, I do see what I believe is red lines on it indicating a fence around the entire site, is that something that's, it's obviously not before us, but it looks like it's part of the plan, when is that to happen?
Immediately, as quickly...
I'm not talking about around the storage containers, it looks like I'm seeing it all around the site.
There are actually two fences that kind of go almost around the perimeter. It doesn't have, it doesn't extend towards along 95, because there is some fencing already put up there by DOT, but it does go around and there's gates. That's all part of screening the storage containers, as well as providing additional security.
But those fences aren't up now?
They're not up now, no.
Not up now.
That's correct.
And it sounds like those fences will achieve the abutters, or keep them from parking?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that answers that question. Why not expand the building? Why not do something else? It seems like there's plenty of room on this site to do that.
Well, that's a big endeavor. Well, that's a big endeavor to expand the building. This, this property was just purchased in 2024, so just last year. And having the access, that's a big endeavor to construct a new building or in addition to, to the building. That's part of what we discussed with Mr. Zakelli and Mr. Houdon, what would be required for building, a building here. Is that something that might happen in the future? It might. But the storage containers.
So we're all, I'm sorry.
What's needed for, for security for the business and providing storage. That also neatens the site, and with the fencing also addressing some issues that they may be having with abutters and others.
Yeah, I think, so, you know, the bylaws, you know, I think vague a little bit with storage containers, because basically the bylaws, hey, you can have them for a hundred and eighty days and then we expect them to go away. What, what I don't think even in checking in with Josh here, it doesn't sound like we actually define the physical size of a storage container, or are they a standard thing?
So I'd just like to read, just for reference or for informational for the group, the definition of storage container, "A fully enclosed detached self-support structure not having a foundation, electricity, or plumbing and utilized for temporary storage of any kind."
Correct. I get that part, but it doesn't say anything about dimensions.
That's right.
Which we're all about the dimensions, right? So did I hear you say, though, you think these are approximately eighteen feet in length and eight feet tall?
Eighteen to twenty feet long.
Okay.
They're about nine feet wide.
Nine feet wide.
And they're about.
Eight feet high.
Eight feet high.
And I agree with you. I don't, I don't see the need for a ten-foot fence. And in referencing Salem Plumbing Supply, I can say I wasn't here at the check-in, but I don't believe that's working out right now, where they're actually storing things above the fence. You know, they're stacking above the storage unit. So how do we prevent that? These four containers come full and we start putting things up on the roof.
We will certainly take a condition that there will be no storage on top of the storage containers.
That, that's good to hear. I don't like the.
Can I, can I get a clarification on that?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Mrs. McGill is telling me that storing pallets on top of the storage containers is common.
And that's where I'm going with this. I just think that gets us back to this unsightly mess, right? That we're, in everyone's estimation here, yours, client as well, we're trying to clean up, right? I would ask, again, back to the fence, if you were granted this, and this might be just me personally, but I think this, these slats through chain links fence is horrible. Is there any way, I've seen fabric meshes that look a lot more slightly. And I have a feeling they're probably cheaper.
Fabric mesh is fine.
I think the problem with those slats is one breaks, one gets poked by a forklift. You're not going to have someone else the next day to fix it. It's just going to stay there, right? Where maybe that wrap mesh, I'm not sure what it's called. I don't know if the zoning board members or anyone knows what I'm even talking about, but.
Mrs. McGill knows exactly what you're talking about.
Well, there you go.
And she agrees that that might actually work out better.
And I imagine it's not as expensive, but I don't know that.
Possibly not. I don't know the answer to that.
I just think, you know, we're, we're trying to do some good things here, right? We're trying to clean up a site. You're asking for things we don't allow, even in contractor's yard. We do allow outdoor storage. I get it. It's because it's a contractor's yard, but we don't allow the trailers. And anyway, but I think all my questions have been answered. So you're okay, you would take the mesh instead?
Yes.
I don't know if, I guess I'll go out to you, Josh. Do we know why we want ten feet instead of eight?
I believe, as the applicant alluded to, that prior conversations and discussion with nearby abutters, there was a concern to, you know, try and, you know, keep the trailers as less, you know, less visible as possible. So the applicant team was proposing a height, that height, I think, as they mentioned earlier in the evening, that they would even have a preference to not have a fence that high. So it's not something that's coming from staff.
That's right. We, we were trying to be responsive with, to some of the comments that we'd heard during the prior appearance here. I did go back and look at Salem Plumbing Supply. That's a six-foot-high fence. There was some discussion and a couple of board members wanted eight.
I think we went to eight, didn't we?
I don't know that. I didn't see that in the decision as it being eight feet that I remember, but I had in my notes requesting eight feet.
Either way, the stuff's above it.
Yeah, eight, eight feet is, eight feet's fine.
All right.
With the mesh, that's fine.
And so if I'm looking at the drawing correctly, I do see a bubble around the four, but they're not going to be fenced in. Just this whole site's going to be fenced in, correct?
There are two sides. Josh, can you pull that plan up again?
Yes.
And while he's doing that, could you tell me what is the space between each of the trailers or storage containers? Is there a set spacing we're trying to give? Is it just to be able to open the doors so they don't hit each other? Is there any way to blow that up at all? Josh?
It's just some standard spacing. It looks like the, the distance, it's about this nine feet. Kind of the distance is equal to the width.
So is the intent here to have an additional fence inside the site fence?
No.
No, okay.
That is, that is simply a bubble around the area.
Okay, so there's no, it's not, they're not fenced in?
The fence is red.
No.
On your plan.
I think it's just, the red is the fence, just.
Correct.
And so you're looking to put what was going to be these green slots, but now maybe this mesh around the entire site? I guess I'm not clear on how these storage containers are being covered.
I'm going to come up and point.
Would you like a pointer?
Do you have a pointer?
I do.
No, I'm all right. I don't need a pointer. So here's the four.
Yeah.
Fence is here. Down to here.
Okay, so that's the, so that's the only place we'll have the slats or mesh?
And, and the other side.
Okay.
So now south side of the building, we're doing the same thing.
Okay.
Here, here.
Very good.
And down to here. Then we've got a gate here, and we've got a gate here.
Okay, that clears it up for me. Thank you. All right, I don't have any additional questions. I'm just going to strobe the board one more time if anything else has popped up. Yeah, go ahead.
I just have one question. I saw the, the sample of the fencing, and I thought that was the mesh. The mesh kind, or am I mistaken?
I don't think it is, but.
It's not the mesh kind?
I think those are slats.
Those are, those are vertical slats, but will, which are a little different than sometimes the diagonal slats that you see. But the mesh is fine.
Okay.
And I guess one last question out to you, Josh. So this wouldn't go to Planning Board or Site Review?
That's correct.
This is strictly on us. Okay.
I have one.
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
So those two smaller storage containers in the back, are those permanent?
They're going to move to.
Yes.
Over to the right there.
I don't think they are. You didn't say those.
No, they're separate.
Those are different. So that makes seven.
Right. If you count those as storage containers, we never, we, the town that I've dealt with has never considered those sorts of boxes, storage containers. Storage containers have always been these larger twenty, eighteen to twenty feet long, nine feet wide, containers. That's what I have always permitted with this board and previously with the planning board.
Then, oh, excuse me.
That what you're talking about are some smaller, I would call them equipment, which is permitted in a, in a contractor's yard, under the bylaw. That's, that's equipment, it calls for heavy equipment and materials and things. That's just a storage area for, in this case, what's in there are really heavy nuts and bolts.
Are they shown on this plan?
But it is, it is a container. It's not a piece of equipment. You would put equipment in, in a box, but you're putting bolts. I'm just trying to wrap my head around, I mean, we have the definition and there's no dimensions and it's, it is the height and the width of a storage container. Maybe not as wide, but it is the height, but it's not as long. So it looks like a smaller storage container to me. I mean, they are shorter, but, I mean, I don't know what to call them. Are they toolboxes? No. I mean, are they sheds? No.
I think they're actually closer to toolboxes, given what's, given what's in them.
Yeah, I would say they're very big toolbox.
Because the bolts and the, we're talking about big bridge steel. So the bolts and things are big, and the, and they're very, very heavy. So they have to go into these, I'll call them toolboxes that are, that are in the back. But they're not anything that I have ever heard be permitted as a storage container.
Okay. I mean, the placement is probably where they should be, because they're by the bay doors. So if they can bring in the bolts and they have the bay doors and they can go. But I'm just, I'm just a little bewildered by what do we call them in going forward and what are they? To me, they're storage containers. So I guess you're asking for seven. One floating, six permanent, two being smaller.
If this board feels that those are now storage containers and that is not a, a definition that has been used in the past for these types of containers that are around. Storage containers, and when Mr. Cassidy sends out notices, he talks about storage containers being what we think of. It's kind of one of these things. You know it when you see it. It's eighteen by twenties, big storage containers, not these smaller, smaller things. And I think part of the, the problem that I see is that the bylaw talks about needing approval for storage containers. It really should be exempted in contractor's yards, because contractor's yards permits big equipment, big materials, big vehicles to be parked outside. Again, that's the definition of a contractor's yard. And now you kind of, the bylaw is overlapping now the storage container permitting requirement, which really doesn't make sense in a contractor's yard, because you're already allowed this big equipment. And, and I would think that kind of a box is really part of equipment.
Yeah, but we have the bylaw we're working with now, and according to that, it seems like it is small storage container. I mean, I'm not saying I wouldn't approve because of it. I just want to have a good grasp on what is, what exactly is there and what is a storage container. But I guess that's all I get.
I think to follow up on that, Attorney McCann, so you're asking for these four storage containers, one revolving one. What else is on site that's not classified as a storage container, but allowed as part of a contractor yard? I, I think what Ken references is these two larger toolboxes, job boxes, whatever they're called. Are there other larger items like that that don't fall under the heading as storage container?
I would think that there are.
Guess we're just trying to get our arms around the, the whole thing.
It would take a long time to describe everything that's on site, and things come in and out all the time, like the staging and stuff. So I don't, if you have a specific question, those, but those were actually custom-made for our heavy tools. They have plates, they have shelves inside, so we can load it with the forklift. Those aren't.
So if you had to quantify like right now on your site, you have how many of these items right now? And it comes and goes, it sounds like, on a day.
I probably have a hundred and fifty job boxes all over the state. Where, how many are in my yard at any given time, I have no idea. And they range anywhere from a regular job box to up to above my.
So that's what you can, you classify them as job boxes?
Yes.
And they come and go out of this location, depending on the job that's next, it'll ship out to that new site?
Yeah, my experience of a storage container is the same size as a tractor trailer truck, whether it's twenty or a forty-foot truck. And those and none of our other equipment is like.
But we're not asking for forty-foot storage trailers?
No, I'm just saying that's my understanding of a storage container in the thirty-five years I've been doing it. They were always like either a half-truck or a full truck. So they were either a half-trailer truck or a forty-foot bed. So it was like twenty or a forty, because they can fit right on a trailer. And that was my understanding of a storage container.
Okay. Well, we're all getting a good education on storage containers, job boxes, and fencing, I guess, too. All right. If there's no other questions from the board, I am going to open it up to the public. We're here on Twenty Popes Lane. If you have a question, please raise your hand and go to the microphone. Seeing, hearing none. All right, I will come back to the board. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, go to the microphone, please.
My name is Brian Edmonds. I live at The Meadows. I hear talk about storage boxes. I hear talk about fork trucks being used and heavy equipment. A question would be, are the storage containers metal? And the purpose for the question is if you're moving heavy materials around with fork trucks, slamming them into metal containers, that will be extremely noisy, startling. And as neighbors to the facility, that would be a concern. I'll leave it at that.
I, I think, so this is Twenty Popes Lane, and this is a permitted use in the highway corridor up there. So I agree with you. It's probably loud, but I don't think there's many abutters to this site.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you got it. Okay, is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment? Okay, we'll come back to the board and we'll deliberate. We're looking for a special permit. Qui has a super majority, and Chris, we will start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I like the way the property looks now. It's a big difference from when Manta owned it and had all kinds of things scattered everywhere. I will vote in favor for this. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Ken?
I'll vote for this, too. I'm fine with those two job boxes in the back. Yeah, I'm with the mesh. I'll vote for this. That sounds like the best way to go.
Thank you, Ken. Ken Shoals.
I'm a little concerned that we don't know the exact dimensions of these storage units. If it's an eight-foot-high unit, I guess I'm okay with a eight-foot-high fence. If it's not, if it's, let's say it's nine or ten, I would, I would like to have the ten-foot fence. But that being said, I would vote for this.
Very good. Thanks, Ken. Karine?
I would vote for this with the mesh. I would want to cap it at three months to move the, the containers to their stationary site and have the fence erected, if you would take that as a condition. And if you need extra time, let me know, and I can certainly maybe change that. I think it needs to be a ten-foot fence because of the distance from the fence, from where the container is. I think it will, it will shield it from view, because the fence, it isn't right up against it. And I think we need an eighteen-month check-in.
Attorney McCann, you okay with those conditions?
I think three months might be a bit short, because first we have to get through the appeal period, so that's going to eat up a month. So, and then that's going to put us into the middle of the winter. What do you, can I ask?
Sure.
Timing, what do you think? Okay. Certainly, the applicant's preference is to get it done before the winter. But if we don't, if we have an early frost or something, we can certainly move the tray, the, the.
Containers.
Storage containers, you can do that, to that locate, the location shown on the plan, the four and the one.
There is, there might be availability with the amount of chain link we need for that.
Right. And, right. And the concern is availability of the chain link fence.
Well, what's, what's a timeframe that you could live with?
Let's see, it's September three, six. If we could do. six, six months? Yeah, six months. So after the appeal period, so have six months running after the, uh, appeal period expires. So that'll get us to April if we need it.
So how about if we give you to April thirtieth to complete this? Would that work?
Yes.
Okay, and let me just clean this up a little. So we're gonna put a condition that both the, uh, fence and the containers are in place by April thirtieth. Have we decided on eight or ten foot high fence?
Ten foot.
I'm with you on the ten foot.
Ten foot high fence and with mesh. And we're asking for an eighteen month check in from now or from April thirtieth? I would say about a year from April thirtieth.
That's fine.
All right, so a check in April thirtieth in twenty twenty-seven. Okay, all those conditions make sense? Uh, Attorney McCann, I can say, you know, especially when this came before us back in February, uh, I too, like Ken, um, I had some confusion on what's a storage box, what's a job box, what's a job box, all this. Uh, I didn't see the site as Chris indicated before when it was run by another contractor. I get the nature of contractor yards there. Chaos, controlled chaos sometimes, sometimes not controlled chaos. I do feel like this does address, um, a lot. I'm not a big fan of storage containers. I feel like it's just a it's it's a difficult, uh, fine line to walk. But with that said, I did vote in favor of the one uh, for the plumbing supply place, and I do think this addresses some things. So I will vote in favor of this. As long as you'll take those conditions. Uh, with that said, could I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to grant a special permit to allow for a total of five storage containers to be located on site to provide secure storage for materials associated with the contractor's yard in excess of a hundred and eighty days. Containers to be screened with fencing, um, and that adjacent properties would not be adversely impacted. The proposal would not be detrimental to the public good and would not substantially deviate from the intent or purpose of this bylaw. In addition, we have conditions, um, of one, the fencing shall be constructed with mesh slats.
Not slats, just
Just mesh?
Yeah, mesh.
Sorry? The containers shall be moved to their stationary site and the fencing can, um, completed by April thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. The fence shall be ten, um, ten feet in height. And there will be a check in in April of twenty twenty-seven.
Very good. I've got a motion with conditions. Could I get a second?
I'll second.
I got a second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, uh, let's let it rip.
Our next case is one fifty-three Andover Street. This is Route one fourteen A zoned. Uh, request for a special permit to allow for a contractor's storage yard to be operated at the address listed above. Additionally, the applicant requests a storage container to be placed on the property for more than a hundred and eighty days. The request is made by Interstate Property Management, care of owner Preza Abruzzo, limited liability company, dock at twenty-five dash five, one, one, two.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have something to pass out to you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, could you identify yourself and tell us what it is you're looking to do?
For the record, Anthony Cogliano, three ten Lincoln Ave, Saugus, Mass. O one nine oh six. I am the property manager here at one fifty-three Andover Street. What we are looking to do, we have several tenants in the building that are cleaning companies, transportation companies, livery companies. The one particular, we have a a landscape company that has a storage container out back that they keep there. Lawn mowers, weed whackers, snow blowers. So they're the only ones that have the storage container and they keep all their stuff inside. There is no heavy equipment on the property. It's just parking of trucks and, um, landscape trailers. So I had thought originally that both hearings were tonight, both for the con for the parking of the vehicles and the storage containers. I I was unaware that it was just the storage container until Friday of last week. So it's basically that storage container that we're looking for. So the storage container that is there presently has been there since twenty twenty-two. It is, uh, eight feet tall, eight feet wide, far by forty feet in length. And next to that, there's also a smaller job box that is, uh, eight feet tall, twenty feet wide.
All right, um, and I'm sorry, could you say your last name again?
Cogliano.
Cogliano. Mr. Cogliano, are these photographs from today?
These photographs are from today. Yes, they are.
Okay, because that was out of your site Friday and it certainly didn't look like this. All right, uh, I've got, um, a few things I just want to point on. This is for the the neighbors as well. So I know you're here, uh, it looks like on trailers. We just got a full diet, uh, not trailer, sorry, storage containers. So I think we're we're kind of dialed in on storage containers right now. However, though, can I ask, um, so when did you, uh, take over, uh, management of this property?
I took over this property January first of twenty twenty-five.
Okay. So I'm gonna, um, I'll wait on my questions, but, uh, I I think there's a bit of confusion here. This board can't, and I think you're aware of this.
Yes, I am.
Grant, um, a special permit for what is perceived to be by the planning department, a contractor's yard. So, um, I think there's a lot going on on this site. I'll I'll give you an opportunity to explain it in more detail. But we can't grant that to you.
I understand.
And and to grant, uh, again, you've you just heard a full uh, appetite of, uh, storage containers. It's a high bar and and this is a very, I guess, different situation where you're not in the highway corridor here. And this is not a contractor's yard currently. So with that stated, I will start, uh, unless you have anything else you want to present to us.
The only thing I wanted to add is that this originated from a problem that was going on in an adjacent lot next to ours. The property is owned by Lowe's. It's owned by one of the car companies and a portion of it is actually owned by us. The area in question, we always thought, or the company that I run now, always thought that Lowe's owned it. And there was illegal dumping going on there. There were a bunch of
Yeah, I got a, I got all that.
Yeah, there were a bunch of homeless, uh, people there. Once I found out through the engineer that we do in fact own the portion in question, I had it all cleaned up. I had everyone.
It seems like a lot of good work has
Yeah.
Has taken place. I understood there was a lot of vehicles there, too, and so I I'm not, I'm not here to discredit anything that's going on. I get it. However, I think, um, I think, I I know, again, I have a number of questions, but I think we'll try to ferret all this out tonight.
Okay.
However, um, the way I understand the breakdown in in Aaron, uh, Josh, I don't know why I keep calling you Aaron. You answer the both, so that's good.
I'm here.
You know, this address is, uh, one fifty-three, but there's actually, I guess, three separate and distinct tenants and maybe four, actually. Right? So we've got Olive Garden out front. We've got the Lowe's. We've got Group One, which has a deeded amount of spaces for parking vehicles. And then there's, and I I just looking at the assessors, I guess you're known as Site Two?
Yes.
S T two, is that what it is?
Yes.
Thank you.
If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I have a copy of the deed and the actual drawings of the lot if you'd like me to give it.
Uh, it might be helpful, yeah.
Sure.
I believe you're this blue area, correct?
Yes, and what we just found out is we own that.
Okay, let's, uh, yeah, I'll go back to the mic so we can get all this. Okay, well, thank you. Okay, um, do you have anything else you want to present? Because I know the board probably has a lot of questions.
I'll take your questions.
Karine, we'll start down there with you.
There is a lot going on at at this whole, whole site. Um, first of all, I went over the original, um, I guess, relief that was granted on this site. And at one point, and I'm not sure if it's still going on, there was some company that was doing employee off-site parking and they were shuttle busing, um, employees back and forth. Is that still going on?
Not not at our site, no.
I think that was Group One.
Was that Group One?
Yeah.
Okay, but NICS, um, I I believe there's some sort of like either rent a car or some sort of taxi service. Uh, they they're still there because I saw those cars last week.
NICS is there and and what I did with NICS is I moved NICS to the, um, the spaces abutting the water so they can't get any more legal dumping back there. NICS cars are back at night. They're gone all day. So that prevents that problem from happening.
Okay, okay. And and you you have that building, um, the law firm's, um, signage is on the front.
Yes.
What are the parking requirements for that building? Do you know? Because I know that there's parking, there's some parking in the front, there's all the parking in the back. But if you have all of these other kind of contracted parking spaces, is it infringing on the parking for people that are going to that building?
Not at all. We have, the building is a hundred percent occupied and there is more than enough parking there, even with the NICS Transportation, the limousine company. And and now that we found out we have these additional seventy-five spots, we have an abundance of parking.
Okay, and you said that you have two landscapers that, um, did do they have indoor space? Do they have offices inside?
Yes, they do.
And so they have offices inside and then how many vehicles do they each park out and back?
Proscape, who is, uh, Mr. Lukakis is here with me tonight. He has thirteen vehicles. And the other company has, I believe, eight vehicles.
Okay, and but only one of them has a storage container?
Mr. Lukakis has an eight foot by, uh, eight foot by forty foot storage container. The other one has a smaller job box.
All right, and they and they're both on the site?
Yes, they are.
I I know the big one, but, um, and that is located there all year round, correct?
Yes.
What about the job box?
The job box has been there for approximately three months. I don't know what what they're how long they intend to keep it there. That's why I wanted to add it as another construct, another container on site.
Okay, so these twenty-one vehicles, are they there year round?
Yes.
And they're only there at night during, um, kind of like the lawn maintenance season, correct?
Correct. And then, uh, Mr. Lukakis also operates a plow business, plowing contract, and both of them do.
Okay. But for the most part, in the wintertime, those vehicles are there twenty-four, seven?
Unless they're out.
Unless they're out plowing.
Correct. And the ve- and I I moved everything behind the building now. At one point, the, um, the landscape trucks are on the opposite side, more towards the the property owned by Lowe's and and, um, the auto dealer. Now everything is behind one fifty-three Andover Street. There's a six foot fence behind sixty percent of it. And if the board would like, I would add, continue that fence down or make it however high you wanted it down the rest of the property. You can see in the pictures that I showed you, there's no fence behind the Proscape trucks.
Okay. And, um, Mr. Chair, could I ask
Yes, go ahead.
Could you give us just a summary? I know that we, um, Brian provided us with kind of a recap, but what are the conservation issues here?
I can't get into that too too much. But I believe that it, I think it was alluded to, I believe that it might have something to do with the dumping in the waterways in the back there. I think that's what was alluded to earlier. I believe that's what, that's one of, um, since there's not any, uh, proposed new building or addition, you know, they wouldn't need to apply for like, you know, a notice of intent or anything with the conservation Conservation Commission. I think if in your question, uh, conservation issues, I think it mostly had to do with, um, like
Like illegal dumping that in the town was notified?
Not sure. Um, I think, yeah, uh, our our office was notified that this was happening and then we
We went out to investigate. I know that, I know that Mr. Cassidy's been out there several times. And he had Emily with him so that she could handle the conservation component of it.
Right.
Okay, and but you don't know what was being dumped. I'm I'm assuming that it was probably trash from people that were, you know, illegally living back there, um, but
I'm not sure about that pe- that piece or the the
Well, I'm I'm sure the neighbors are gonna tell us all about what was going on, so we'll find out.
Sure.
Okay, I I have no further questions at this time.
Ken, before I go to you, so but Josh, I guess I want to clear something up. So right now, this this landscaping business is not permitted to operate here. It is not, uh, zoned for that. This is a commercial building, so I just want to make sure you're aware.
I am aware.
So, you know, what's going on right now is in violation. I think, uh, I I just want to make sure that our board members are aware of that, too. So quantifying trucks and, you know, if you could you bring up any of those photos?
Yeah.
I mean, I
Which which the, your your photos?
Mine, yeah. I mean, I I, you know, I commend you for trying to clean things up, but we're trying to clean things up on something that's not allowed.
I I totally understand and
I mean, this is what I had Friday.
Yep.
And then, uh, if you could go, I think there was like a stack of these, I think they're used for plowing, right? It's, uh,
The snow pushers.
What are they called?
The yellow snow pushers that are stacked.
Yeah, I mean, so this isn't a contractor's yard, but you've turned it into one. And I I understand you said you just took over at the beginning of the year. But, um, yeah, and then this container, I mean, none of this is allowed to be here.
I understand.
And, uh, I just want to make sure our board's aware of that. So, uh, with that said, Ken, I'll I'll go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so in the application, they're requesting a special permit to allow for a contractor yard. And currently, they are not a contractor yard.
Right.
So I guess I don't have any questions because this is, to me, there's nothing to vote on.
Well, I think the, isn't the application off of storage containers?
Yeah, but they can't have that unless it's a contractor yard.
Right, I I actually agree with Ken.
Not in one fourteen zoning. If it was highway
Are we understanding that right, uh, Josh?
So basically, I think this is out of sequence. They should be going to the planning board first.
Totally agree with you.
I think if I remember, that was Brian Zekely's take on this as well, that
Because that's why they're getting violations now.
Right, we don't want to grant a storage container if they deny the
Folks, if you could hold your comments, please. All right, uh, please, ladies, thank you. Um, all right, so you have no further questions?
I don't.
Yeah, Ken.
So there was, so where NICS cars are right now.
Yes.
There's also two buses there. Is are those NICS?
No, that's a limousine company that runs from us as well.
Okay.
Damnous Car Service.
It's another company. There's also a unregistered box truck.
Box truck will be towed tomorrow. I sent it out to all our tenants over the last week to find out if it belongs to anyone. No one's claimed it. It's not registered, so that'll be taken away, the white box truck.
Yep. Also, there's an RV. Looks like someone's living there.
Yeah, RV's gone. It left on Friday.
Okay. What else I got? So the back, yeah, there was, it's it's like a, John alluded to this, is gravel, there's there's a mulch or there's something, there's a block and stuff, so it is being treated as a contractor's yard. On the side, there is another company called Clean Tech. On the side, there is another company called Clean Tech?
Yes.
I believe they have vans on the side.
One of our largest tenants, they have approximately 5,000 square feet of office space.
Okay.
And they are a cleaning contractor for.
Okay.
Hotels and major businesses in town.
Then also, there's two smaller storage containers on that side where Clean Tech is, and they're called pack, pack van, pack van storage containers? They're not that long. Again, they're like those eight to 10-foot.
Are they mobile?
Uh, well, they look like they're just sitting there. I could show you.
Yeah, if you could show, can I take a look?
Sure. But they're, they're on the ground. I don't know if you can get them packed. Let, let me show you, let me show you the side of it. Sorry. Come on.
That one's going to be moved completely.
There's two of them.
Not on our property. There's, there was one gray one like that.
Okay, but I see two right here. They're abutting each other, and they're right next to each other. Well, they're on the side, like Clean Tech's vans.
Let's go back to that mic and do it.
They belong to Infinity or something?
Yes, they do.
Okay, sorry about that, I apologize.
No problem.
All right, so then in the back, also, there is that big graffiti, um, storage container.
Correct.
I saw a clean freak out there stripping mattresses on site on Friday. So they're actually working out there. I don't know if you knew about that. Is, is that their storage container?
The smaller one is, yes.
Okay, the, the My Box?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, so they were out there stripping. I mean, it was quick. They seemed like they did, they were very efficient. I don't think it's a big problem, but again, it's not a store, it's not a contractor's yard. Then there's just a bunch of trash and hoses and stuff. It looks like you cleaned that, that up. All right, I guess I covered it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Chris?
I see all the Proscape trucks. Now, do all those trailers stay there in the wintertime? The, I would assume the lawn mower trailers that are on, connected to each truck?
Yes, they do.
Okay, and what about the Bobcats that all the pushers go on? Do those come to this site and get stored at this site, or are they out on satellite?
They're all, they're all.
My name is Peter Lakakis. Nice to meet you.
One more time in the mic this time.
Peter Lakakis, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
They're all on satellite. Nothing's on, on site.
Okay.
Peter, you were one of the tenants?
Uh, yes, sir.
And what company?
Uh, Proscape Landscape Company.
The only other question I had was, how about the, I think I saw three, they look like junk plows to me, that they don't work. There's a couple, when you're looking at the Proscape trailer down to the right-hand side.
They're going with the box truck.
All set, thank you.
Don't, don't know whose they are.
All right, so I, I think it's great that your building's full. How many tenants are there currently there?
I believe there's 22 tenants at the building.
Okay. You know, we're, I think, as I already alluded to, you know, several of those tenants aren't really allowed in this zone without some kind of permitting from the planning board, separate board, right? Not us, not the zoning board. I know we're going to hear from the neighbors, and I believe a lot of good work has gone on here, and I, I want to form this in the way of a question versus comment.
Sure.
But you're asking for something I don't think we can grant until these other steps are taken with the planning board. So I, I just, I say that with, I understand the amount of work that the planning department's put in, I think along with Conservation Commission, too, and it seems like a lot of things are going in the right direction. However, I, I think the elephant in the room is, we don't allow landscaping contractor yards to operate out of this type of site. So, so I want to say, keep on the path of, you know, cleaning up and getting unregistered vehicles and this type of stuff out of there. I think it bodes well for, you know, whatever you put in front of the planning board, but I don't see how this board could grant storage containers. So I guess I'll ask it this way, what are you looking to put into storage containers, and how many are you asking for?
The only storage container that I really want on the location is the one for Proscape.
Okay, but see, again, how can we grant Proscape?
Right.
When landscaping contractor is not allowed there.
I can tell you, I, I've been on the Board of Selectment in Saugus forever, and things are done a little different. Our zoning board.
Sure.
Handles both.
Not here.
I, I get it.
Thank God.
When I met Mr. Cassidy on site, he told me that I had to come here first. Had I known I had to go to the planning board first, I certainly would have applied.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, again, I, what was said is, between you two, I wasn't there, but I guess that's my number one question. It's like, you're asking for a trailer that I don't think we can really grant. Because we'd be granting a trailer for a use that's not allowed. I think that's the way I'm understanding it. But, but that said, I think you did clear up some confusion around the parking spots in the back, because I had the same question, and that's where NICS Transportation is now parking their vehicles.
Right.
And I think if I heard you correctly, you think that's helped to curb or completely eradicate the illegal dumping that was going on back there? Because those vehicles are physically in the way, so was it those parking spots where things were being dumped?
Yes, that's where the, it was a lot of furniture, old furniture, people throwing out trash.
People found out about it and.
And, and it did get to be a homestead for quite a few people.
Sure.
And I had no idea.
And I'm sure I'll hear from one spokesperson, I hope, for the neighbors, but we feel like that has gone away.
I'm there at 6:00 AM every day.
Okay, and so to your knowledge, right now, there's no dumping going on, and how long ago were we able to get this cleaned up?
To be honest with you, Friday's the first.
Taken the whole year, or is it?
Friday is the first day that I, well, I, Lowe's told me about six weeks ago that we, in fact, owned it. We had no idea. So I got these drawings that I left you back from our engineer on Friday. So that's the first time I knew that the property belonged to us. But I, I did take steps to clean it up prior to that, now that I know that it's ours.
And is there a way to mark those spots in a way that NICS understands? Like, hey, you can park on this spot, but not that spot?
They, they understand.
It seems to me like there's a lot of room for, unless you own the whole back.
No, can I show you again on that drawing?
Well, no, you don't have to. I think I'm just, I'm just trying, I've always been a, a big believer in, you know, striping and marking, because maybe the average driver for NICS doesn't understand, he's just dropping a vehicle, right? He doesn't really care, right? He's going home for the day. So I guess.
There are landscape islands back there, and we own to the, if you're looking at the landscape islands, we own on one side.
And you said it was 75 spots?
75 new spots that we.
Well, they're, they're not new, but they just, you're new and finding out, right, okay. I think my other questions have been answered, but I, I do want to hear from the, the neighbors.
Sure.
And, but I, I wanted, before we go out to public comment for the neighbors, the board's very aware of what's going on. I think the town, and again, that's not us, we're not the town, we're the zoning board, we're neighbors just like you, has done, I believe, several visits. We have enforcement letters. This has uncovered a few things with Lowe's is, you know, going to have some enforcement issues as well, I think we're looking into. So this is a large campus, we get it, you're in a butter to it. I've been on this board for 15 years. I can remember when Lowe's was before us to do the Olive Garden, and also when Group One was looking for the parking spaces. So it is confusing to me, but again, I think this Site Two, I think is what they're calling it, or Unit Two, has morphed into something it's not intended to be. So I, I can imagine that was, is a sense of frustration for the neighbors. So we're here to try to see if we can't figure it out and get everybody happy again, so.
Thank you.
With, with that said, is there any additional questions from the board before I go out to the public? So again, neighbors, we understand about the dumping, we understand about, you know, the contracted yard and the things that are going on there. I think the applicant is addressing them. This board can't really fix those things, but we are interested to hear from you, and please not repeat each other. So show your hands if I could just have somebody come up.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I just wanted to let everyone know that this board is in receipt of 31 letters from abutters not in favor of this application.
Very good. Yes, we received those today, I believe. Yes, gentlemen at the Maroon chair.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Norman Dearborn from Unit 308 of the Meadows, 19 Gardens Street. And as gentlemen just stated, we had 31 out of 35, now 33, it grew today, against this because of what we've been dealing with for pretty much the existence of that plot of land, and Lowe's and Olive Garden, since they were built in the early 90s. And it's, it's noise, it's trash, it's people hanging around, it's nefarious activities, and it goes on and on and on, and dealing locally with those entities is, is very difficult. They don't want to hear from us, they don't want to deal from us, deal with us. They don't return our calls. We called the town back in May over specifically this plot of land we're discussing now. Brian Cassidy and Emily Beatrice came down.
And then, and let me just interrupt you, and that call was based on the illegal dumping?
That call was based on the illegal dumping, the noise, pollution into the swales and wetlands and conservation lands.
In your estimation, do you feel that has been addressed at this point?
It's been partially addressed. The, the main thing that we've seen happen most recently was the line of cars the gentleman just spoke of that are going right up against that retention pond.
This is NICS Transportation, I'm talking?
Correct.
Okay, not the landscaping vehicles.
So to familiarize yourself with that plot, what he's speaking of is the very back of it. There's one line of cars, and then you have the two retention ponds. That's where the line of cars is. You go immediately to the right of that, there's another smaller parking spot that abuts the swale, and directly behind the swale is us. It's our fifth building and fourth building, three, two.
Close proximity to the back of that lot.
Very close.
Yep.
The cars are a good idea. We, I've seen an improvement in the couple of weeks they've been there of, as far as what's going in, and correctly stated, what's not going in. If the cars go over further to the right where we are, that would be even better. The biggest problem we have with that lot is two things. We have to deal with three tenants. Who's who? Is it Lowe's? Is it Group One Ira? Is it this gentleman? Is it Olive Garden? Who, who do we call today?
Yeah.
We don't know, we've, we've never been told. The most important problem for what people want to use it for, it's totally wide open. No security whatsoever, no fences, no gates. Lowe's is there all the time with tractor trailers coming in at all hours of the day and night. We have buses in there, we, heavy-duty vehicles are in there from time to time. We had as many as three to four overnight campers for days at a time this past summer and fall. They're all gone now. Thank you for doing that. And it's just got totally out of control.
But there has been some progress, it sounds like.
There's definitely been some progress.
And if I can remember back to the 2015 decision, I thought we had asked, or the discussion with Lowe's was about delivery times and, I believe, a gate on one side of their property because they were having trucks idling or something. Is that issue gone away, or did that correction help?
The issue's not gone away. The gates were installed, they're never used. I see them closed on weekends. They have two, one at the front, one near us on their driveways. Sometimes they latch, sometimes they're not. They just kind of swung closed. Rarely chained, saw them chained and padlocked on a three-day weekend. Maybe it was Memorial Day.
Well, I guess I will, I will say this, and, and this is, it's difficult for us as well, because again, this is a large site, but it's one address. However, those issues are, you know, actionable items that the planning board can, you know, contact Lowe's on your behalf. So I think, you know, look, I wouldn't want to have to be calling the town every day something goes wrong over there, which sounds like it's pretty regularly. But that is a valid avenue where the enforcement officer, Mr. Cassidy, can come down, and tickets can be written or notices, you know, usually Lowe's will have a knee-jerk reaction and say, oh, yeah, we're going to fix this up. And what I've found in my 15 years on this board is every time they change a manager, you're kind of starting at square one again.
Which is very frequently.
And that's not just Lowe's, and that's all the big box stores in town. Although I think we're, we're having some success with Walmart, but I always say, the better the manager is, the quicker they're leaving, because they're pushing them up the ladder. I, I, I'm not saying that to be funny, but my point is, this applicant on, in his building, we can't hold his feet to the fire for what Lowe's is doing. If, if we didn't have these things in place in our decision with Lowe's, then maybe we could pull Lowe's in here to be part of this, but it is written in the decision, and, and I do feel like that's an avenue. Hopefully, Lowe's can, you know, again, come back to where I'm sure they were initially in 2015. I, I, I guess you've been there since that time, and I'm guessing, I guess I'll ask the question, was it better in 2015 when they first put the gates in, and were they kind of, were you, guys as neighbors happy at that point?
It was better very temporarily. And as you mentioned a moment ago, the better ended when the general manager at the time moved on. Someone else came in, and there's been a constant churn and burn, if you will, of that position in that store. And again, as you stayed, correctly stated, every time this happens, we go through issues, major issues. And we, we, we do the process, we do the right thing, we make calls, we go up there, we present ourselves, and we wait, and we wait, and we look for calls, and we look for feedback, we get nothing. Then we escalate it, usually to Brian and his group, and they step in. And not to be a wise guy, but it becomes a rinse and repeat.
And I totally understand it, and I, and I understand the frustration. I just, as a zoning board, there's not a lot we can do about that, and that's the sad part, right? We've, again, we, and as you saw on the prior decision, this is why we have these check-ins. This is why we add conditions to agreements, and, but they're not worth the paper they're written on. If, if, you know, if we don't have those conditions in there, then the town has nothing to come back and say, hey, wait a minute, you guys aren't following this. I think in this instance, it's something that the town can come to them and say, hey, you're not following this. And, and also the police, right? I mean, I, I know you guys don't want to sit there and call the police all the time, but unfortunately, if, if things are that bad, and I'm in a butter to Lowe's, I don't think sometimes they give you any avenue. There's, especially, it sounds like you guys approach it the right way every time and try to touch base with, but again, spinning back to why we're here tonight, that, those issues, we, you know, are not, this, this Site Two within this address has its own problems, but I, I don't think we can do anything about the Lowe's and the truck deliveries and that stuff, so.
Is that, originally, we were told by the town, it was probably the planning department, I don't remember, that that was the area we're speaking of, that was called a car condo, and it was for storage of cars and SUVs.
Well, there's, there is a decision from 2017, I believe.
Or the 15 you were alluding to.
2015 was when Olive Garden was put in. The next decision, I think, is 2017?
Yeah, May of 2017.
May of 2017 allowed Group One, which is Ira and their group. They had an X amount of parking spots similar to this applicant, where they could park new cars and employee cars, and I believe that employee car situation was a temporary thing. But they still do own a chunk of the lot that's their right to do with, and it's deeded, it's in the decision.
I think it's in the, on the map.
That yellow area, correct?
That's right.
Yeah. So, so again, but these are decisions, they're recorded, they're in there, so. So, so again, but these are decisions, they're recorded, they're in there, so they are permitted to do that.
So this is, but what's morphed to recently is buses, trucks, plows, campers. Again, I don't want to take up your time. This, these are all planning board issues. Go back, go back and see Brian Cassidy.
Well, you know, again, I don't know how, you know, how, short of this site being fenced, totally.
Right.
You know, I know they have all sorts of troubles with the car carriers on 114. I know they've stepped up enforcement there, but I have a feeling it's probably still happening, right? Maybe not as much. So I don't think I have a good answer for you, unfortunately. But I think it all starts with the planning department, understanding the three distinct, or four distinct tenants that are here, and who's allowed to do what. Now, we've already noted tonight that this applicant's not allowed to do what he's doing. The twenty-two tenants he has, I don't know how many of them can be there by right. But I know, I know for certain, it can't be a contractor's yard, and it can't be all this landscaping equipment. So that piece, I think we can try and solve, and I think the applicant, my assumption is he's going to apply with the planning board, and I would expect all you neighbors to be there and be able to talk about these things. But I can't, there's no magic bullet here, unfortunately. I don't think we can just wave a wand and solve this. I would like to say we could, but it's, as you've, as you've seen, it's not easy, right? And that's the unfortunate part of being an abutter to this site. I do think Lowe's, and again, I'll, I think when they're before us and they're listening, they're, they are apt to react in a positive way and try to clean things up, because they do want to be a good neighbor. But they're not before us tonight, so.
Right. And historically, over the thirty-plus years I've been there, they've been a bad neighbor, much more so than they've been a good neighbor. And a bunch of people I see are shaking their heads in agreement with me.
I can't dispute that, because again, I don't live next to it. So I would agree with you, and the hope is always that we can try to improve things.
What would be the correct entity for us to go to?
Well, that's a good question, and I'm going to throw that hot potato right over to my, Mr. Friend, Mr. Josh Morris.
About the fencing and the security of that lot. That's...
What would be the best way for these neighbors to address this, these concerns?
I guess my question would be in terms of what area on this map is the issue, or like geographically appears, I guess, at the, you know, this is the application that's in front of us today, but what is the area that you're saying?
Do you think it's, is it the yellow area with the Group One, or is it this applicant here within, in the light blue? Yeah, that's...
It's the, it's the yellow, yeah. That's the lot right there.
Yeah, so that's Group One.
Yeah. And this, is, this is where his building is?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah? And then he has these rare spots behind the yellow, which is where Nick's vehicles are all parked. Do you see that? Yeah, exactly.
Right there.
Yep.
So, and this is the area?
That you're having...
That we're concerned, that yellow where?
That, that seems like that has started to become a problem, or it's been a problem all along?
There's our building right there.
Okay.
There's our other building right there, and then they come down this way you can't see. That's our issue.
Okay. Well, so I guess we can ask the planning department to, you know, send a letter to Group One and ask if, you know, maybe they can address these concerns.
I mean, it's not in front of us tonight. I know that there was a recent issue with, you know, there was a recent zoning violation there that our office spent a great deal of time getting, trying to help get rid of all the cars that were parked there that were not affiliated with any of the businesses there, you know.
And again, Aaron, I'm, I'll get it right before the night's out. Josh, it's usually Brian over there, that's why. Their spots, though, aren't delineated either, correct? There's not like a box on the ground that says, hey, your spots are here. We have it on the deed this way, but it's not...
Right, right. In reality, in the field, when you're in that parking lot, you're not, you don't know.
Not even plow sticks or anything, right?
I don't think so.
So I don't know if that answers the question, but I, you know, again, I feel your pain, I get it. But I think it would start with, you know, it sounds like you guys are very diligent. You do your homework and try to talk with Lowe's and talk with it. But I think the issue, it sounds like you're having is with Group One, and what they can and can't put there. And, you know, are they in their sandbox, or are they spread out? As far as campers and large vehicles, you know, I don't know with a parking field that big and unfenced and off of, you know, three major highways, right? 114, Route One and 95. I don't know how to solve that one. I don't know if anybody does, but...
It's true. Fencing, fencing.
Cameras, fencing, yeah, all of it. But it comes at an expense, and it's, who wants to do that? So, if I could, yeah, Mr. Bradstreet, sure.
And just so you know, like, for instance, Home Depot over by the Liberty Tree Mall, they're the same nuisance to the River Run people. The same stuff goes on that you're dealing with.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Bill Bradstreet, town meeting, member of Precinct One. I failed to ask at the Pope's Landing, I'll ask at this one. Is it your purview of the planning board hours of operation, which I think might affect these folks?
Yeah, I, you know, that's, again, that's an interesting, that's a good point, because I think they all have slightly different hours of operation. I would imagine Olive Garden's not the same as Lowe's, and this applicant, I don't know. We'll ask that question. I don't know his hours of operation.
That would be my biggest question.
Sure.
My only question, hours of operation.
If I'm hearing the neighbors right, though, I understand they're not happy with the contractor job, but I think, I don't think things are happening late at night. But I guess I'll let somebody tell me otherwise.
You have to ask, right?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, right there, that gentleman.
My name's Nick Wild. I'm in Building Five at The Meadows, which is the one on the picture there, closest to...
Closest, yes.
Yes. And I've lived there for just about twenty years. I've served on the board recently and also in the past, so I've had a lot of dealings directly with Lowe's primarily, as well as the other tenants and owners. So I've had a lot of experience with this issue and proximity. So I will answer your question that you just asked, and yes, there is stuff going on twenty-four hours a day, including the weekends.
Are you able to pinpoint it, is it...
So this is, so I think one of the big problems, and maybe this is planning board, or I'm not sure who, but this, there's kind of this no man's land here, and you've alluded to this as well, where it's like everybody and nobody owns this area where the worst things are happening. And therefore, when there's a problem, no one takes responsibility.
Sure.
But when it serves their purpose, oh, it's ours. And as you also alluded, cleanups happen, you know, just the right times when something's needed. And that's been a pattern, where it takes us, you know, weeks, months of back and forth with the tenants, with the owners, eventually with the town, threatening letters come from the town, things get cleaned up, and then time passes, and it's back to square one. But as far as it sounds, I mean, Lowe's is probably the earliest in the morning and latest at night for noise, and they're supposed to not start at least until 6:00 AM, which is still pretty early. Almost every day for the past few weeks, 5:30, 5:40, I'm woken up by forklift activity, loading docks opening and closing, engines beeping, banging sounds, and it goes until 11:00 PM at night. So that's earliest and latest of legitimate activities, although it's a violation to start at 5:30 AM.
Sure is.
And then throughout the night is what's ever happening on this no man's land, which is, I mean...
Probably not Lowe's, but it doesn't change the outcome, right?
Among other activities, drag racing, donuts, fireworks.
And it sounds like if I...
I mean, clearly, clearly there is...
If I could ask you, I read somewhere, I think it was one of the letters, it sounds like Danvers PD has also stepped up patrols in the area. So have you seen improvement?
I mean, no, not overall.
Even in the last month?
As far as, as far as the cleanup, you were asking about?
No, I'm talking about like overnight noise, the car racing and that kind of stuff.
I mean, I guess in the last few weeks, I haven't heard the car racing specifically. Still hear a loud music. There is, you know...
So it's kind of a hang spot, it sounds like.
Parties, loud offensive music. There is, I think I've heard firearms, but I can't be sure at times, not frequently. Definitely fireworks. And, and there's clearly drug use happening back there and alcohol consumption, because you can see the remains.
Sure.
You know, the next day. So that's like between 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM. And then it's the commercial activity. The rest of the time, dump, giant metal dumpsters, also multiple neighbors with huge dumpsters that are banging at five, 4:45 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning.
Well, again, I'll say it again, those are actionable items. Dumpster pickup can't happen prior to 7:00 AM, and it's just a simple call to the police department. And the police can definitely write tickets, and they can be present to witness it, so it's not your word against whoever's picking up the dumpster. A lot of times, it's just, you know, those trash pickup companies, if they can get away with it, they will. But if they know they can't come till seven, they usually will refrain and come at, probably at seven on the dot, but they shouldn't be there at 5:30 in the morning. Again, I feel your pain. I think it's horrible. But I do think this is an area where, you know, again, it's not this applicant per se, but there are actionable items here where Danvers PD can be involved, and you'd just really have to be diligent. It sounds like you have a bird's eye view on all this, unfortunately.
I literally, I can see over their fences, too.
Sure.
And there's also, all these properties have bright lights that are on 24/7 as well.
I think if you can just be persistent, usually what I've found is, you know, this crowd or whatever's happening there, they're going to find a new place. If they know the cops are there all the time, again, that would be my hope. Again, I think it does take work, though, unfortunately, on not just yourself, but, you know, all the neighbors, right?
I mean, I'm willing to keep calling the police if they'll keep responding, and that's, that's...
It's a quality of life problem, and I don't think it's, you know, I don't, I'm sure the police don't look at it as a burden. You know, this is why they're here in town. They're here in town to protect us from this kind of stuff, so.
I mean, I've called them a couple of times, but not a lot.
Yeah. I'd just say, step it up. I mean, maybe they're not going to like seeing this video tonight, but I think they want, you know, everybody wants their peace and quiet, right? And it doesn't matter if you live next to Lowe's, or if you're, you know, on some dead-end side street, right? So...
So it sounds like we've reached a point where that's the enforcement now, is the actual police, not planning board, not zoning board, not anything else. Just go to the...
Well, yeah, I mean, if there's things that, you know, our Group One's doing that shouldn't be happening in that, in their chunk of this, then that's actionable by the planning department. Just like this tenant, it's actionable to not run a contractor's yard. Lowe's should be using that gate. They shouldn't be firing up their equipment at 5:30. Dumpsters shouldn't be getting picked up prior to 7:00 AM. Those things I know, so that's, that's the best advice I can give.
Yeah, and the last thing I'll just say is, I know, I'm speaking for myself, and I know neighbors of mine, I mean, I added it up, and it's, we're talking thousands of hours of lost sleep over twenty years.
Yeah.
And it's a, you know, it's a physical health issue, it's a mental health issue, it's a quality of life issue.
Sure. I don't disagree.
Yeah. All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, hold on one second. Mr. Bradstreet, hold on, I just want to see if there's anyone else with any new comments or anything I haven't already heard. Yep, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I introduced myself earlier. I'm Brian Edmonds from The Meadows. That's Nineteen Garden Street. It's a new topic, but related, and I'm asking for your direction. We also have a neighbor, 27 Garden Street, that has an auto body shop in it, Dent Wizard. And my place is overcome by paint fumes, not every day, but often. In the morning, I get in my car, the inside of my car smells like paint even though my windows are closed.
And I'm telling you, this is on Garden Street?
It's on Garden Street, 27 Garden Street. My question is, is, I have called the town in the past.
Uh-huh.
The answer I get from the town is, we've done what we can do. We can help you. I haven't called the police. I'm not opposed to calling the police.
Yeah.
But my question is, is, first, I would like your awareness of that, so if there is zoning action that allows auto body shops to be in, next to residences, that that be strongly considered. Because although requests for zoning and planning actions are well-intentioned, as we see, these things get quickly run out of control.
Yeah.
And then it's up to the residents to be policing them. We can call people, but we are the ones that invest our time. We are not at work when we're living there. We're paying to live there.
Right.
So these things need to be strongly considered. But I am asking for your direction on how would I address that issue, or how would The Meadows address that issue?
Well, again, it doesn't pertain to the application before us tonight. However, I guess I will, again, go out to my friend, Mr. Morris, for his direction on this.
I mean, if it's a business that's been operating, or, you know, I mean, our first, you called the office...
Louder, please.
If you called the office tomorrow, I mean, the first thing I would do is, from a zoning perspective, see if that use was allowed. And then if it was, then, you know, we would go from there, but that would be...
So it sounds like the steps to take would be to call the planning department and ask if this is an allowable use at that address, give the specific address.
This gentleman represents the planning department?
Correct. He's from the planning department.
His name, I couldn't hear what he was saying.
Yeah, from the planning department. So you just call into the planning department.
You might want to call on Brian Cassidy.
Okay, very well.
Brian Cassidy would be a name if you wanted.
Very well.
He's our enforcement officer.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, you got it. Mr. Bradstreet, one more time.
Again, Bill Bradstreet, only because the gentleman mentioned the lights from this property lighting up the house, or, yeah, is it this board or the planning board that can, I don't know, call it light pollution or whatever?
Yeah, I believe there is some new action coming up soon, and I will, again, go to Mr. Morris on this.
We recently, even at the recent town meeting in February, we had proposed some light regulations to be added to the, to the zoning bylaw. Unfortunately, at that time, there was some, there were some folks in town who felt like the language was, needed to be amended in some manner, so it was not ultimately voted at town meeting. But we're hoping at a future town meeting in the not-so-distant future for new lighting kind of regulations, requirements would be added to the zoning bylaws. And then we could, when we have these conversations, we could point to the sentence or two, and then we could say, you are in violation for, you know, so...
But we're not there yet. However, a good neighbor would do what they can to shield...
It's not just businesses.
Sure.
Flooding backyards. Sometimes it's neighbors flooding other neighbors.
Yep. And I think that's what the bylaw was trying to address.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I'm going to ask the applicant to come back up. And you wanted to rebut or speak?
No, I just...
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I heard one of the neighbors say if we could put the cars, Nick's Transportation, along the other side, I certainly have no problem with that. I'll ask them to move that portion of the cars down the right side of the back of the lot, which abuts your property, no problem.
Up here through the chairman, please. Excuse me, sir.
He wants you to address him.
Yeah, hold on, let him, let him speak. But, so, I thought, if I heard you correctly, though, we thought this was serving a good purpose to stop the dumping and this type of stuff.
No, I'm going to keep them where they are, but I will add them down the other side that abuts their property as well.
So we're furthering this kind of pseudo fence, if you will.
Correct.
But with motor vehicles.
Correct.
I got it. Yeah, go ahead, Kareem.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Do you have any security back there?
We do not.
You don't have any cameras, or?
We have cameras on our building. They don't pick up the lot.
Could they be changed so that they do? I mean, I think there's a lot going on in this lot that you should probably not want going on back there.
Well, I've cleaned up quite a bit of it that was going on.
No, I'm sure, but...
And I have no problem adding cameras, if that's what the board would like. I have no problem with that.
Okay, because I think it certainly would help you to be able to monitor it. But also, it seems like there's a lot of illegal activity going on back there that's not being done by your tenants. And you should want that stuff out of there.
I've, I think, now that, again, now that we know we own that lot, I've cleaned up a lot of that.
And again, I'll go back to what I said at the top. I think some good work, although I know the neighbors are still frustrated, but it sounds like they're frustrated. Frustration is not just with you, it's partly with Lowe's, it's partly with Group One. And I think there's still... with Group One, and I think there's still a lot more work to do.
Yeah, any of the neighbors who want my cell phone number, I'm happy to get it.
They might call you late, though.
Yeah. I don't sleep much, doesn't bother me.
Put the phone right out the window so you can hear...
I have property everywhere that I deal with, so...
But to bring this back around to what were before us tonight, I don't, again, this is, and I'm giving my opinion, but I just, I'll...
I'm more common than what's before us.
Well, I let you speak twice, so I'm just going to, I'm going to close the public side of it, because I think, I think we've kind of hit all the high spots here. But I don't think we can grant the special permit at this time, so, board members, my thought is, we either continue this or withdraw without prejudice, and I think I'm hearing from Mr. Morris, maybe a continuance would be in order.
Might be more appropriate, you know, it'd be appropriate.
Yeah, so if you would be all right with that, and we can work out some dates, and that allows you time to file with the planning board...
Sure.
And address the, you know, the, what's not allowed on this site, and then perhaps return to this board.
Okay.
And again, I'm not trying to give the runaround here.
No, no, I understand.
Again, I think a lot has gone on that is positive, but I think there's still a lot of work to do.
Totally understand.
Yeah.
If I were to file this week, would I make the next meeting or into October?
You're probably into October, but we could, we could talk tomorrow.
We can push you out, so our next meeting is September 22nd. I don't think that would be enough time. We could either go October 6th or October 20th.
Does that give me enough time?
But that's your choice.
I have no problem coming back, I just want to make sure I can get to the planning board prior to coming back here.
Well, Josh, what do you think?
Why don't you, why don't we do, maybe, why don't we do the October 20th for this hearing?
That should give you plenty of time.
Okay.
So, but I'd like to give the board members a chance to give some comments, so I think that might be helpful.
Sure.
And, and then, you know, we'll make a motion to continue this, so...
Okay.
Karine, I started with you, so just some comments for the applicant.
I just agree, I think you need to go to the planning board first, and, you know, see if they'll grant you the contractor's yard before you seek a special permit for the storage. I think you should take what the neighbors have to say, because again, they're there 24 hours a day, and they're there at night when you're not there, and they're monitoring what's going on, and again, I think some of it pertains to other building owners and other things that are going on, but I think there's some illegal activity going on back there, and you shouldn't want that on your property either.
I certainly don't.
Thanks, Karine. Ken?
I agree with Karine, Karine. Obviously, you need to figure out if this can be a contractor's storage yard, first of all, before we can even vote on that. It seems like you're moving in the right direction, cleaning things up, hopefully that's appeasing the neighbors a little bit, but until you do that, I think we have to hold off. So, we're doing the right thing to go into October 20th.
Very good, thanks. And Ken, Jay?
And I agree with what the other board members have said about the contractor's yard, and you're going to get rid of that box truck tomorrow, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good, yeah, so you're doing a lot of stuff, and then, yeah, we'll revisit it once you're a contractor's yard. That's all I get.
Thanks, Ken. And Chris?
The only thing I have to add, there is quite a bit of difference between Friday, when I drove through, and today, when I drove through. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, I would say the same, you know, again, I visited the site Friday, and clearly the photographs I see today are certainly better. However, I think one of the neighbors said it, you know, when, when people are here looking for things, they're putting their best foot forward, right? But, but then how is it afterwards, right? And as we've already heard, eh, things aren't so great with Lowe's, maybe things aren't so great with Group One. So, maybe you can buck that trend, and, you know, we'll, we'll get, hammer out something here between both boards, and, you know, something that will stick. I think, you know, as somebody that lived next to a business that wasn't a great neighbor, it is frustrating, so I get, I get all the butters here, their pain, if you will, and I wouldn't want that, and you wouldn't want it either, right?
I understand.
So, I think to my fellow board member's point, you know, increased security, you know, and maybe it's just a spot check, you know, maybe you have your own security people go there, you know, every random other Friday or something, just to shoo people off your site, because with the, out the fencing there, I just don't see how you best police that area. I don't have a good answer, and I, I think it would be quite an expense to try to close that off and fence it. I did, I would ask, though, I noticed, and I, I didn't see in your photos, but there was an area of the chain link fence in the back that did look like it was broken, and maybe if you could get that repaired again...
I'll fix that, too.
I think a lot of good work's gone on here, and I commend you for it, I hope it continues, and I hope we can, you know, find out, find some way here to keep everybody going in the right direction, so...
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, with that said, board members, it looks like we're going to continue this case till October 20th. If I could get a motion.
A motion to continue the case until October 20th?
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. And Josh slash Aaron, if you don't have anything else for us, we'll, we'll, sure, go up to the microphone. Yeah, just for the record, state your name again, please.
Yes, my name is Brian Edmonds.
Folks, did you just hold your comments for a second?
Sorry.
Yep.
My name is Brian Edmonds, I live at 19 Garden Street at The Meadows, so it was established this evening, I want to understand the authority of the zoning board, because it was established that there are businesses operating that aren't allowed to operate. So, what immediate actions are taking place against that violation?
Well, they're currently under a, what's called a zoning enforcement, a letter has